Stu and George's?
The key, I see someone on line.
Oh.
Yes.
Who care? We are alone.
About a minute, Chad.
Here it does.
So is everyone ready? Cheryl, you good? All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And at this time, I would ask everyone, please rise and join me for a prayer and the pledge allegiance. God, as we start the new year, we ask for your wisdom, guidance, and consensus for differing points of view, all for the betterment of our community. Watch over our first responders, our military men and women serving around the world in harm's way, and their families. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all.
And Cheryl, if you could please call the rule.
Mrs. Skatos?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Potash?
Here.
Chairman Morales?
Here. All right, you've all received the minutes for December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and January second, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have any corrections, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as distributed. We have one item this evening under Communications from Mayor Sherry L. Capello informing council of the reappointment of Robert Hoffman to the City of Lebanon Authority for a five-year term, and that's effective January first, two thousand and twenty-four. And Mayor, if you could give us a little background?
This is my first meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of the new year.
Yes, of the new year. So, Mr. Hoffman previously served for ten years from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and six by an appointment by Mayor Iceman. I then appointed him in May of two thousand and eleven to fill Dave Edder's term. So that's just about thirteen years for a total close to twenty-three years on our authority. So we thank him.
Absolutely. I know, like I said, on Thursday, Bob sits on a number of boards, and the city is very grateful for his continued service to the city.
Yes.
All right. Any other comments from council? And from anyone in attendance? Okay. Moving on tonight, we have one resolution. That's resolution number one, authorizing the proper officials of the City of Lebanon to enter into agreement with North Cornwall Township for the provisions of Fire Protection Service within North Cornwall Township. And do I have a motion for resolution number one?
I'd like to make a motion for the resolution number one, please.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. Sean, thank you. Resolution number one has been moved and seconded. Mayor, if you could give us a little background?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I initially brought this up during our budget workshops. This was under intermunicipal contracted services. The agreement before you this evening basically pays the city for services it is rendering as mutual aid responses that we will be providing or do provide on two box cards in North Cornwall Township. These two box cards represent the commercial areas around North Cornwall Commons. It's fourteen oh three and fourteen oh four. The agreement formally recognizes the mutual aid assistance the city's providing, places us first on response, and provides a financial consideration. As I explained on Thursday, it's a minimum of twenty-five thousand dollars just for us to be first due, and the fire chief will be, and deputy fire chief, will be tallying those calls. And if we reach a point, we have an agreed-upon set amount using FEMA rates for equipment, and then our average hourly rate for manpower and benefits. And we'll assign those to the time for each response, each call. And if we exceed the twenty-five thousand, then we'll start billing them.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is, I think, a great agreement for the city and also for North Cornwall. They've seen an explosion, and, well, I shouldn't, maybe I shouldn't use the word explosion, but things have been growing there. And as we all know, with the price of apparatus, this is a great cost sharing for both entities. Any other comments from council?
Another question, Mayor. Chris Coyle from Levtown. You said this places us first on response. So for those two areas of North Cornwall Township, are city fire companies required to be the first fire company to respond when there's an alarm?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. We're not, we're not backing them up, I guess, is what I was saying. Right.
Then.
Right. Okay. In other words, it's not a situation where if there isn't enough North Cornwall fire apparatus for a particular fire, that we're backing them up. We're the first ones to get called for those two specific areas of North Cornwall Township.
For those types of calls, like fire or automatic fire alarm, those types of calls, we will be listed on the box card as the first piece of equipment.
Right. Okay.
But not for accidents, tree down.
Understand. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, Jeff. Mayor, my understanding is we're already the first call for those two box cards. It's just been happening. How quickly will this go into effect after we pass it tonight?
Immediately. I mean, we're already doing it.
And so this is just now we'll be actually collecting these fees?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Cheryl, if you could please call the rule.
Mrs. Skatos?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Potash?
Yeah.
Chairman?
Yes, that's five in favor, zero against. Resolution number one is so moved. All right. Tonight, we have, under remarks, we have Dave and Lori Funk, and they would like to give us an update on the Chestnut Street Community Center and the HUD Point-in-Time Count.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, Lori. So I just want to say, and I think I speak on behalf of chairman, and I think all of council, Dave and Lori Funk are two very humble individuals with the biggest hearts. They founded the Chestnut Street Community Center in two thousand and twenty-one to provide safe and affordable space for not only human service organizations, but also faith-based organizations. And I know that that was at a great financial burden to them, and they probably don't look at it as a burden, but they are... They really, I'm not sure what word I want to use, but the spirit of giving back to your community, that's what they represent. So I just want to say, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Mayor, council, Chief Fisher, and all the rest of the staff here, Dave and I wanted to come here tonight to let you know what's going on with the Chestnut Street Community Center. As you know, we've been busy the last couple of years. Dave's here, and also, you know Dave, but you also know, may or may not know Kim Briggs. Kim is also a social worker with Lebanon School District. And if you don't know her, you probably should. She does some great work here in the county and has for a long time. She serves on our Board of Directors and has been a great connection point for us to understanding some of the issues that impact our city. So, the reason I'm here is to thank you for your support, for helping us to revitalize what was the First Evangelical Congregational Church Christian Ed Building. And that building's located at six eleven Chestnut Street. It was in August of two thousand and twenty-one that City Council earmarked COVID funds from, under the two thousand and twenty Cares Act in the form of community development block grants for the development of the homeless shelter. Since that time, Chestnut Street Community Center has used those funds, and we prioritize the funds to install an elevator to make all of the floors on the building accessible. Other renovations have included the installation of an HVAC system, fire protection sprinkler system, the replacement of windows and lights to fit out a worship center, the IU thirteen community education space, that's brand new, and a twenty-four-seven space for the Lebanon County Christian Ministries Fresh Start Emergency Shelter. Additional funding for this project was provided by Wellspan, Lebanon County Christian Ministries, and numerous private donations. And we're proud to say that the renovations are complete. On the ground floor... On the ground floor, Ministerio Vida Nueva en Cristo, which is a growing congregation of more than seventy people, use their space for worship and fellowship activities four to five times a week. There are always people there. On the first floor, the IU thirteen community education has started their new semester. They're in their third week of classes, and approximately sixty students and eight staff are in and out of the building each week. And they're conducting English, GED, and citizenship classes there. And this week, the Fresh Start space is being cleaned. Actually, what's really happening on Wednesday is the Lebanon County Coalition to End Homelessness will be conducting the Point-in-Time Count. It's a time then when we send out volunteers across the county to search for people who are unsheltered. This count is mandated by HUD, and it's a time that across the country, all the, all the different municipalities and communities go out and report the unsheltered and sheltered guests. And that money, well, those reports filter back in, and it directs what money comes to the various communities. So I would like to invite you to that. There is, if you want to talk to me about it afterwards, a little flyer for you. And also, next Monday, January twenty-ninth, there'll be an open house from four to seven. You're all welcome then as well. So thank you, Mayor Capello, City Council, and Janelle, for helping us through the process. We have learned a lot, met many dedicated and caring people, and we look forward to continuing the work right here, right now, in Lebanon, because there is abundant beauty in this community.
Absolutely.
And I just want to emphasize, you know, I have the opportunity to work in a lot of different municipalities, and it is enjoyable and predictable to work with all you here. It's not that way everywhere that I get the opportunity to work. So I definitely appreciate it, from the zoning variances to the building permits, approval and inspections and all. Very fun experience, so I want to keep doing that.
If I could ask you both to stand by, there might be some questions, Lori and Dave, so I'm gonna... Council?
Yeah, I have a question. I was discussing this with Joe about the point in time. I was curious, why January? It's one of the coldest months of the, of the year.
It's a good question.
Yeah.
To hear a good answer, other than HUD makes us do it.
I mean, yeah, that's what we, the conclusion we came to. It would be really nice, yeah. And I just also wanted to comment. I had the honor to be on the board, the zoning hearing board, when your project originally first started coming through, the, you know, going for the variance and such. And it really is great to see, you know, putting the ribbon on the end of your renovations all these years later. So, great job, and thank you guys for your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? And from anyone in attendance? Lori, Dave, again, thank you so much. And for those that don't know, before the shelter, our folks that needed sheltering would be, they would go around, I think, every week, it changed. Every two weeks, those individuals would have to go to different sites. So, you know, now we have this one location that is now remodeled just for that population, and it's exciting to see. And Dave, Lori, thank you for everything. We're so grateful. Thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. Dave, we don't often hear about the permitting process being so easy, so thank you.
And that's coming from probably the largest general contractor in our county.
If we could get that in writing, maybe yours.
Because they know what they're doing.
All right. Moving on tonight, we also, Mr. Wiley Parker, I believe, would like to address council. Wiley, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'll try to make this quick. I know I only have three minutes. I have two issues I want to address, one of which is noise. And when I was sat where you're sitting, we had a person who used to come regularly and complain about the noise on Chestnut, or Walnut Street. And, and I always felt that they were overemphasizing or exaggerating the extent of the problem. But I think this is something that's becoming more of a problem in our neighborhood and in the area where my office is located at Tenth and Willow Streets. On any summer afternoon, primarily summer, but also in the spring and fall somewhat, we get, from like two-thirty in the afternoon on, we get thump, cars that come with, with the big speakers and the thumping noise, and it's really distracting, and it's really a problem for a law office when you're having settlements, and you have a meeting with clients, and you've got this, this noise going on. And in our backyard, my wife and I go out to have a cigar in the evening. The noise on Walnut Street is just unbelievable and has gotten substantially worse. Like I said, I used to minimize it and talk about the fact that I live there, it's not a problem. But it seems to be becoming a problem. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not sure what the noise ordinance that the city has is, but, but it seems to be a problem that's growing more and more serious. And I think it's sort of a broken windows kind of thing that goes to this issue of the quality of life. And when you've got these kinds of distortions and noise, in interfering with your, with your lifestyle and actually with businesses, it's problematic. So I've said enough about that. The other, the other issue that I'm concerned about is, and this was, this was, actually was one of my pet peeves when I was on city council, and that's synchronization of traffic. Ninth Street and Cumberland Street are pathetic. And, and I think it's, it's a, it causes a waste of fuel. It causes annoyance to people who are coming through the city. I always got explanations that there was some, we weren't sufficiently computerized, or the system wasn't sufficiently advanced to be able to incorporate synchronization. I mean, and I've been off council for a long time, and I would have thought that we could have brought ourselves into the twenty-first century. But if you're coming on Ninth Street from, from where I'll come out on, on Oak Street, basically, I'll wind up hitting at least three lights red before I get to Willow Street where I'm turned to go to my office. And if I'm coming up Cumberland Street, this morning, I actually went through without a problem. I thought, well, maybe something happened. Maybe I, maybe I wasn't aware of a change that was made. But on my way here tonight, as soon as I got the, I was on Cumberland Street, the light at Sixth Street turned green, I started to go, and Seventh Street immediately turned red. It's frustrating. And, and I, again, I think it, it creates a bad aura for the city to have people be inconvenienced by not being able to, to get through the city in, in an organized and reasonable fashion. So again, I'm trying not to be too much of a curmudgeon.
No, no.
And be that guy who's coming to council and moaning and groaning. Because I've many times thought about it, but John Dissinger, another council alum, and I were talking the last couple of weeks, and he suggested that he was going to come, and then he bailed on me. He didn't show up to me. But that's my concerns. Do with them what you will, but I think they are legitimate concerns.
Absolutely, Wiley, and we appreciate you taking the time to come in.
Thank you for allowing me.
But I will let the mayor...
I'm going to say something first, and then I'm going to have our new Public Works Director, who I don't think you've met, Chad Yegley. He replaced Robin Getz. But it is correct, when you were on council, and you're on this side of the table, we talked about needing to get a software upgrade, but we couldn't get the software upgrade until we had all the conflict monitors and different equipment updated. We tried several times to get a grant because it was very expensive. So we started putting so much in each year's budget to replace them. A couple of years ago, we found out about new technology. We ended up butting the bullet, and a hundred and forty thousand dollars later, replaced all this through GPS. We had the PennDOT representative come in and synced everything, and it's according to permit. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Chad so he can talk to you about that, because we have reached out to LTAP, and for free, they will come and help you through different situations. So he has reached out to them for them to take another look at it, but I'm going to let Chad talk a little bit more on the details of it.
Good evening, sir. So today, I went down to the highway garage, and I spoke to our longstanding member down there, Mike Bates, who has been involved with a lot of the signalization and the electric components with the lights throughout the city. We have two loops in the city. We have the downtown loop, which is timed for eighty seconds. And then we have the Lima Street corridor was timed for seventy seconds. And that's from the time the light turns green until it turns red, and then cycles through again. What the mayor was referring to here is, we spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars and put GPS timers and wireless systems on every one of the lights so that it would stay in sync as far as time goes with the universal time. What was happening before is, the infrastructure we have is fiber optics, and it's towards the end of its service life, so it's degrading, and we weren't getting the signal, and they were falling out of time. Everything that we have right now is running as per PennDOT's directives as of two thousand and two. Now, there was a study done in two thousand and fourteen, and new timing initiatives were pushed out, and everything was switched over to the new timing initiative, but there was a lot of callbacks from residents and citizens that complained. So the, my predecessor reverted all the timing back to the two thousand and two study. We're still operating at that time. I requested today that PennDOT do another study and give us some better timing initiatives. Now, the synchronization, as you understand it, and as I would like to see it, is, is like it used to be when I was growing up, when I used to cruise the strip. The light would turn red, turn green, and as you're approaching the next one, it would turn green, and you get right down through the way. That's not how PennDOT runs their formulas any longer. Their goal now is to chop up the traffic into smaller segments to control it moving through the city in a more efficient and effective manner. At least that's the spiel that they've told my traffic guy, right? So that's what I'm reiterating to you now. I'm hoping to hear an answer back from our PennDOT representative to get somebody out here and maybe do some re-timing, because I do agree, there are areas in the city where the signalization does not sync up, and it causes delays when it should not. And it is frustrating. I agree. But I'm working on it.
It's nice to know that something's, you know, that it's in the works.
Yes, sir.
Whatever PennDOT has to do in terms of breaking it up into chunks, I don't, I don't know that that makes a lot of sense to me, but I guess...
It doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, but neither does Common Core math nowadays, and I think that's what they're using. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wiley. Are there any comments from, from council?
I had one. Can you just clarify, the noise on Willow Street, that's also radio? Or is it the auto traffic? Okay.
It's the big, bigger rhythm. And it's, it literally shakes the windows.
Yes.
Okay. At this, I don't know, Mayor.
Just want to add one more thing, because I don't think we've talked about it. And, Chad, you might want to add into this, but, you know, everyone's talking about AI recently, and the city actually stepped up, and we're doing AI for road management. And there's a new company in town. We, it was referred to us by the county Metropolitan Planning Organization, and it's called Violytics. And they're trying to break into the United States and this region. And so they gave us a really awesome deal financially. And this conducts a road assessment and damage detection. It assists with inventory management, like of our storm drains, our manholes, and hopefully in the fourth quarter of this year, we'll be able to do street signs. It helps with plowing, insulting, tracking, task management, and communications between staff in the highway department with maybe a street signed down, and, oh, they can put in an order and see who put the order in, who fixed it, how long it took to do that, planning modules. But one of the most important things, I think, for us is, when it's doing this road assessment, it'll color code it, green, great condition, you know, down from yellow, orange, red, red being the worst. And we only did a small segment so far, but it, we did pretty good, you know? Now, we've done a lot of paving, but I don't know if Chad wants to add anymore about it, but we're pretty excited about it. The guys just had their training. And we'll be able to have a nice colored map that shows, you know, the condition of the streets in the city, which we always get a bad rap. And I keep saying, you need to get out and go to other cities, because it's pretty bad at other cities, and I think we're doing pretty good, or staying at least, you know, comparable.
Do you think you'll make a presentation at?
Yeah.
At council, Mayor?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that when it's Chad's turn for his report to council, that will be one of the things.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. So, so Violytics actually reached out to me kind of on a whim, and I was actually shopping around, looking at some softwares and other things that are out there for a road and data analysis. I use something similar as a, as a recon element in the Army, and so I figured there had to be something by this time that was much better in the civilian sector that would do what we want. So Violytics is actually a German company. They've been in business for about ten years. They're just now breaking into the US market, and we are one of three cities on the East Coast that are piloting their program. As such, they have given us the software at an extremely discounted price with all the backend support. We've got two trainings so far on how to utilize it. It's basically an iPhone that mounts in the vehicle, and you drive. As you drive, it takes a picture every ten feet, and it uploads all that information to the backend servers, which then scrub out all your personal identity information. So it screens out people's faces, it screens out people's license plates, and so on and so forth, and it analyzes the road surface. It breaks it down into different categories that we can then track and treat. If it needs to be sealed, if it needs, you know, minor work, or if it needs complete pave, it breaks it down on a heat map of the city. Right now, we have about ninety percent of the city mapped, just from us driving around. And as the mayor was stating earlier, there's a lot more in the pipeline that is going to be doing. The sign inventory is actually just rolled out first quarter of this year. It's still being experimented, but it will literally track all of your signage. It will give you damage reports if the sign is faded too much, if there's vandalism, if there's stickers on it that it needs to be serviced. It does all of that without our guys having to go out and hand jam notes on what needs to be done. The task button that is there allows you to hit the task button and assign tasks within the actual garage. If there's a tree down and they see it on the side, they can do, assign the task, and it'll put it to all the guys in the garage. They know that something's going on there. We can use this at the railings and trails. We can use it over in the actual Veterans Memorial area for issues over there. It's a very complete civil engineering software, and on the backend, it produces reports. She's talking about the heat map. You can break it down over the length of the road or into small block-by-block or half-block segments and get a good picture of what the roadway actually looks like. Overall, I think it's going to allow us to do much more with less, and the investment will pay off, especially with the data that we'll be able to get. And I do, I do plan on providing you guys with some information from that. Absolutely.
And when do you think you'll be operational, Chad?
I'm actually trying to see if I can pull one of the heat maps that we have right now and put that into the end-of-year report for the mayor. I don't know if it's going to happen yet, since that's due by the end of the week, but I'm trying to get that to happen now, because we haven't been completely trained on the backend stuff, which gives you, it'll spit out plans for...
I guess what I'm asking, Chad, is when will it be, will the city be using it?
No, we're actually, we're actually implementing it now.
It's actually happening now. Okay. Great. Chad, thank you so much. At this time, I will open the floor to council. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I just have a question. And this, this sounds very exciting, and it sounds like a very useful tool. So this is a separate device mounted on the vehicle. There, the intake of information is through that device. There's no physical information entered by any of the employees. It's just... It's just the pictures being taken, and then the AI analyzing just those pictures. And then that's where you get your, like you said, your heat map and other analytics for the signs and such.
Outside of adding notes for the tasks that are assigned with pictures or whatever, yeah, there's really no data entry that needs to occur. On the backend, you can put stuff in if you catch, like, an issue with the AI, it identified a sign wrong or something to that effect. You can go in and fix that, and then AI will learn not to look at that sign the same way. Like, say it's a stop sign with a shadow, that it mistakes as vandalism. You can put it in there, and then the AI, the next time, if it sees that same shadow, it won't flag it until there's actually something wrong with the sign. So, yeah, it's a learning process.
All right, awesome, thank you.
So I just had, along the same, I'm just curious how, like, Lebanon was chosen as one of their test sites.
So I reached, when they reached out to me, I think it was kind of a fluke thing, and I just happened to be looking for software things. So I reached out and engaged them. And once I saw what the product actually was, I contacted the county and set up that meeting and went down there for the Violytics to come in. And the county's really excited about it. They're actually trying to do something with it, with the rail trails. But again, we're spearheading it. So it was kind of just a fluke accident or a blessing, I guess, so, yeah.
You took action.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great. On the cutting edge. Anyone else? And from anyone in attendance? Mr. Wilson, you may approach the mic.
Hi, Cornell Wilson, 27 South Sixth Street. Two things I spoke about the last time I got up here and spoke. And one of the things was Fifth Street, and the reason the lines weren't painted or repainted or arrows is because you guys, not you guys, but whoever was working on Fifth Street, well, it seems that work is done, is that lines and arrows are going to be painted at Fifth and Cumberland, because there's still a lot of cars that just go, both lanes go straight. We've just been lucky that it hasn't been accidents there. The right lane is supposed to either, is supposed to turn right, and the left lane is supposed to go straight, but everybody starts going in the right lane. And I go drive that every day, a couple of times a day. So I noticed that people are not paying attention, and one of the reasons could be because there's no arrows or lines there telling them that that's where...
So there was utility exploration in that area. They were going to do a stormwater project, and now it's been downsized due to some conflicts that cannot be resolved. So they were, we kind of like just found that out last week. So with the cold temps, I'm not quite sure if there's really anything we can do. There should be a sign up. Let's verify that the sign is in place. And maybe we can see if we can, if it warms up like it's supposed to later in this week. Like, maybe we could at least get, maybe spray some arrows temporarily.
Yeah, I'll absolutely have my guys. If there's something we can do temporarily, we'll do it, and until the more permanent heat tap is put down.
Okay.
Pay attention, because it's over on the right, but signs there, but people are just flying and then stopping, and then when you're at the light, they'll just go ahead, and you're trying to go ahead, and it's only one lane. The other thing is, is I complained about trash in my block. I'm the only one that takes the trash back to the yard, the can, after the day after. Right beside me, their cans stay there 24/7. Someone just moved, and there's a whole bunch of trash that she left there. And then another one leaves their cans there for a couple of days or whatever. Everyone has a walkway, so they should be taking their cans back, one. Two, I don't know what you can do now, because the lady moved out, but the snow's on it, and she left a whole bunch of trash. She did that a couple of times.
Well, she's not the property owner, then it would go back on the property owner. So those cases...
Nine and 23 all have...
So 23, 25, and 29, South Sixth Street.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll check in the system. If they don't already have a notice of violation, we'll make sure we send an inspector out.
The only one that might have an issue is 29, but I think there is a walkway there. I'm not sure if the house that beside the block, the walkway, so they couldn't get their cans out, but their cans are out there.
The inspectors will check. I like your shirt. You look very nice.
Thank you, Cornell. And do I have any other questions? You have to come up to the mic, Julia, and give us your name and your address.
Julia McCartney, 418 Stide Street. I just wanted to second what Mr. Parker was saying about the noise with the cars. I mean, I am particularly sensitive to noise, so I give myself that. But I was parked on Cumberland the other day, and not just with, like, the thumping of the noise where the whole car vibrates and everything else around it vibrates, and it hurts your ears, but sometimes we will get there and, like, tweak the exhaust pipe so it makes like a banging sound. A car drove right past my car, and it sounded like gunshots, and it scared the living daylights out of me. Cars were honking at this car because it also scared them. And had I been driving next to that car and that would have happened, like, that just seems like a safety issue. And that is not the only car that I have heard make that sound. There's a lot of cars that sound like gunshots to me or really loud banging sounds, and it's scary.
It's usually the smallest cars, for some reason.
Like the little sports cars. So that's it. And I, I mean, I don't know what can be done about that, but I just wanted to say, to second what Mr. Parker was saying.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
It's kind of twofold here. We have the exhaust issues. Everyone wants their little cars to be loud. And then now we have vehicles that are moving speakers, and it is, it's definitely an issue. So I totally agree with you and Mr. Parker, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And do I have any other questions this evening? Hearing none, I will take a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening.
You good, George? Do you have any questions?
I'm all good. Thank you for making it possible where I could stay at home and start this thing.
Absolutely.